Here I send a man a, here I send a man a, here I send a man a pretty posse. I don't know Uncle Eli. Here I send a man a pretty posse. I don't know Uncle Eli. The money that we represent for, I know so big up the world queens.
Well, this is the art of distinction, reaching out to the champion sound, which is a dance about dance sound called Pretty Posse Sound. Man call Uncle Eli Pete. Kill as much sound as you need, smoke enough weed. Original Andy Chin, ready for kick off a boy face. You think we are rap? Let it go!
Check, check.
Dedicated to all you tell news will come from clap and when I left them clap from the man you from Bristol, when I left them gun from them pistol. Murder style! Charlie sit a bubble while the baseline a rock. Represent pretty posse know when I flop. Every sound feel dead and when they care them a knock and when them just a knock, yes it just a knock non-stop. Here a couple shot selecta them get shot. Here a couple shot selecta left lap top. Inna the confusion, all the bars a get flat. Crawl pon him belly, him a go on like a rat. Let off tree shot, Barry Jed answer that. With something so loud, make boy just back. Hit off a rest a ground taller than a tree top. Linden Boulevard that hit off Springfield fire back. Every sound star run, man start close sharp. Barry Jed up in a Benz and you know him not crash. Come off the park with just to avoid the cops exit and Springfield right at the bus stop. See two sound boy, them a dance to hip-hop. Same time said that Eli him go make a full stop. If you bust a couple, you're right couple sugar mine hot. Them can't test me sound 'cause we are the pilot. Me done set the thing cannot ask me why not? When it come to big tunes, yes, them better find that. Them better find the run of some Gregory Isaacs. Find human girl, yes, sitting in the park. If you please Natalie and the one Coke or Blatt. If the one Dix blessed, yes, we bless up the shot. Yeah, me see just a rock and turn it a tick tack. We will it and marry, yes, them ever look at. Now wearing on the way where pretty posse sound flop. Janet Leigh, she one of the cream of the crop. Serena Badness, I could have even forgot. Yolanda Johnson and the one Maxie Grant. If you come a posse dance, yes, you look elegant. No dams will look good, that them no fit for elephant. What I say, pretty posse sound a that the massive them love. Posse sound a that the massive them want. Me come a posse with me big ganja plant. They say me smoke it and me too high sound. Start rocking, now tell me say them, tell me say them, tell me say them. Now, yes, I we run the land, shot them down, shot them down, shot them down, shot them down, shot them down. Sound bad man, sound a heel a them can't go, can't go, can't go, can't go. Now we run the town. Man a real top and a real top and a real top and a real top. And me say, six feet deep and the boy get fun. Rock a muffin, bring it, muffin, bring it, muffin, bring it.
Check, 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 check. Call we say this is J A I radio, you don't know says all about pretty posse. Boomshits! With a thing called the boom hour for the item. You don't know Iron Eye Uncle Eli alongside the brother DJ Chums for the item. You don't know Fresh From Yard for the item. Say you don't know, we are gonna play some music, some different music, some of this time, some of that and some of that and some of this. So more of the item, just tune in and listen to it. Ca, it's the right now, it's all about a rhythm called the Escape Rhythm. And more of the item, just go on listen it. So it's the right now, it's all about NJ. More if you start it, the rhythm name, the Escape Rhythm. Listen it.
I would never trade this moment.
Moment.
Oh baby.
Call we say J A I radio.
Every time I see your beautiful face.
Beautiful face.
It's so captivating. From the moment that I look in your eyes, girl, I really wanna feel your vibes. I picture you in my arms, holding me tight. Baby, let me treat you right. Let me be the reason you're daydreaming, thinking about what tonight would be like. Cause I got plans.
I do.
Oh baby. And your wish is my command. You're my peace. It's natural when I'm next to you. Moments like this.
What we say rhythm style like the Escape Rhythm?
Aim into place. You love it when I'm next to you. Moments like this. Need to be gorist in your mood. Cascading and waving waters. Brilliant sunshine, romantic sunset. I'll be at your service place.
What we say big up the world listeners out there tuning in?
Close you is where I wanna be. Let me fulfill your fantasy. Ooh, come and get those girls tonight.
Call we say give them some different music. Call we say J A I radio, what we say we full up on different station and different voice each and each and every day. Remember that.
Before the drama and the heartache. Say you never leave me, not my heartbreak. Sometimes I'm missing you while I'm reminiscing. It's kinda sad that you gone. I wish I could have hold you in my arms. Still have your picture on my Pandora charm. Thought I was the only one. Now I'm in love with me. Why keep calling me? Stalking me? Gave you the chance to let me be. I set you free. It used to be we. No more dancing me. Why keep wanting me? Stalking me? Gave you the chance to let me be. I set you free. It used to be.
You're a hero, cause I'm a villain. Ask if me love you, that's a given. Been my Harley Quinn. She's a short guy, you're no joker. He and Queen start us who a go for. Keep calm. Another night for the sheets warm. Twelve for a long pony truck, me a keep fun. You let me love you with your heels on, but you never feel like this with a flag a bang. Quick response, King Allah. Four need to ring just once and to me she stand. And she a transform for me. Said she have to get, I'm in me. Baby, I make my marvel. Paramount couldn't picture that. Real love story, not to act like my marvel. Girl, you make me have to come back. Nine point five eight on the track, make my marvel. Paramount couldn't picture that. Real love story, not to act like my marvel. Chemistry is undeniable. We heading to the top.
Broken record turned on me. Hurting at all, I'm sorry. Broken record turned on me. You won't get my heart again. Now here comes another fight. Someone is keeping you out at night. I try style me a way you feel like. Waiting on the dark must come into light. You do too much wrong for the Mr. Right. I feel like a she make you miss your flight. Kiss me, I bring up everything. Forget you and you fling. Call we a love tonight. You'll never find someone who understands you. Do you remember? When you said I was your peace forever? You'll never find another woman just like me. One that makes you feel free.
Pretty posse ladies.
You think I know she promise me, said she have a proof it. Promise she make love to me, turn the music. She give me the option that no me, me not go use it. She got all the things that's waking up my fire. We have the power, but tonight we have a cruising. More of the staying at the moment, trying to lose it. So music huh? Take it closer. Show me everything that you did with your naughty self. Ooh ah. This little good girl's pulling up my. Ooh, I'm gonna give her everything. I can't you prove your thing. But that not mean you win. I'm about to go.
What we say J A I radio, Escape Rhythm?
I can't you prove your thing. This can't be no one I think. Look me in my eyes when you're bubbling. Let the trouble in, let the trouble in.
She come in on me room last night, what a time, what a time. As me walk through the door, she attack me same time. Boy, I tell me say she ready for the wine. And she not tell.
Listen song!
The complex quiet from earlier. But to the movement of the furniture, them know me have a girl in there. In ya, I twist up and I turn it on, the neighbors a go complain about me again. Can't nobody can't sleep. Now he's a make sure the tough come creep. I'm on a star up the show, you should have seen. Me just a do it and a do it.
Hear ya, hear ya, hear ya!
Everybody a feel wake up. The bed a lick to all the place I shake up. You would have feel like Salaf and we a make up. But I just some a go on, me get the girl that me all, when them come on my place, yeah. Nobody else can never take my space. Every problem solved.
Voice to the one Christopher Martin, Escape Rhythm, for the ladies.
She come in on me room last night, what a time, what a time. As me walk through the door, she attack me same time. Boy, I tell me say she ready for the wine. And she not.
Alright ladies!
Same crime. The complex quiet from earlier. But to the movement of the furniture, them know me have a girl in there. In ya, I twist up and I turn it on, the neighbors a go complain about me again.
Benoit!
Can't sleep. Now he's a make sure the tough come creep. I'm on a star up the show, you should have seen. Me just a do it and a do it.
Nice side song for the ladies.
And nobody can't sleep. Everybody a feel wake up. The bed a lick to all the place I shake up. You would have feel like Salaf and we a make up. But I just some a go on, me get the girl that me all, when them come on my place, yeah. Nobody else can never take my space. Every problem solved, from me take on the case. Them say me are the boss. Me are the best. Visit the girls, me all, when them depp on my best. Nobody else can never take my space. The girls come first.
What we say nice side song tune for the ladies.
You're rich? Ah, just park and go upstairs. Same room.
Here we are again. Breaking all the rules.
Voice to the one Christopher Martin!
Every chance we get. I wanna be with you. Doing what we're not supposed to do. You're gonna drive me crazy. You're gonna drive me crazy. You feel so amazing, baby. Yes, you do. You're gonna drive me crazy. You're gonna drive me crazy. You're gonna drive me crazy, baby. Girl, this feel too good. Oh, we a go stop. Pass the awhile, then we start right back. We say we don't move a chat, we a chat. We know have no sense, me and you no doubt. No bother put on no clothes. No bother turn on your phone. Just give me one more round and then we can leave. You're gonna drive me crazy. You're gonna drive me crazy. You feel so amazing, baby. Yes, you do.
Need your loving. Girl, I need you in my arms. I could feel your body calling. Wanna hold you close, I know you feel the same. So come my way.
Girl, I'm missing you a lot. Girl, you give me comfort. Say me want you come back. No listen where them a chat, me a tell you that.
Stay a smart, what's good?
Girl, me missing you a lot. Me want you come back.
What we say rhythm style like the Escape Rhythm? Oh, courtesy, I want no shame bro, you don't know. Voice to the one Busy Signal.
Girl, I need you in my arms. I could feel your body calling. Wanna hold you close, I know you feel the same. So come my way.
Girl, I'm missing you a lot. Girl, you give me comfort. Say me want you come back. No listen where them a chat, me a tell you that. It's all of you, them can't stop. Girl, me missing you a lot. Me want you come back. Say you give me comfort. No listen where them a chat.
Alright, what we say to the little lady, what we say to the little lady?
Fingers through your hair. Move and make it thicker. Girl, I want you on. Catch it right, yes sir. Let me touch your body slow and undress ya. This say.
Yeah man, back in the cold.
Me is it in my back. Yes, me love you, girl. Your muscle and your position, you twist it on your turn. Freeze, she go long, so she feel listen to her. Girl, feel you loving me and you. Girl, I'm missing you a lot every day. Girl, you give me comfort.
Jamaican knife!
Fuck, girl, listen where.
Knife!
Me a tell you that. It's all of you, them can't stop. She know the things she's for me like. She know the things she's for me like. Sexy girl. Sexy girl give me a real good vibe. She a do the things them where me like. Scream me name all night. She couldn't wait till we go home a little later. Say me turn around and start the switch them on the breaker. Pop me link up with the smooth operator. Touch us low and make she crumble like paper. She do the things for me like. She do the things for me like.
Pretty posse them for see, attention.
Pretty posse ladies.
Sexy girl give me a real good vibe. She a do the things them where me like. Scream me name all night. She couldn't wait till we go home a little later. Say me turn around and start the switch them on the breaker. Pop me link up with the smooth operator. Touch us low and make she crumble like paper. Girl, when you come to me, what you've done to me? Never get that from nobody else, nah. She tell me me a make a body mess, yes, yeah.
Pretty posse ladies.
Cause she love it when me call her name. Me love it when she do the same. She love it when me slow down. Me love it when she link me private on the low down. It's a showdown when she call me name. She love it when me mix the liquor pleasure with the paint. Giving her the sweet sugar cane. Say she worry, do it all girl again. Ready for take guitar, me not go pop them, not go sleep, me no weak. Y'all coming on my zone, me have to send now back to school is a treat. Give her the strength and stamina, me blend the charade and beat. When she come to me, she tell me say I love it complete. When we want the loving, make the vampire. I know nothing for me, it's vampire. Them sexy dressers are dead fire. Keep it real, me not pretend for you. Cause she love it when me call her name. Me love it when she do the same. She love it when me slow down. Me love it when she link me private on the low down.
What we say this is J A I radio, you don't know, pretty posse.
Boomshits!
With a thing called the boom hour for the item. What we say Iron Eye Uncle Eli alongside DJ Chums, you don't know for the item. I want me say Fresh From Yard. Some of them are just a play some nice and easy music for the item, and I ratchet and nada none of them style yet. Yes, a little more from now though. Me again on some chopper music. When me say chopper music, me mean the chopper them. Rhythm up.
Energy flows, their attention goes, yeah. Energy flows, their attention goes, oh Lord.
Let me give them a next one of them style, yeah.
Energy flows, their attention goes, yeah.
We now for Russia, J A I radio, music, chopper music.
There's a place, there's a time for us to look within. Cause I know, love will smile again. There's a place, there's a time for everything. But love, love will reign again. Charm and the love a dat me say, a dat me say. And all the negative a vibes if we move and go back. Me love me life and me love everybody. I love alone, we a push out there. Accent to it, only positivity. Me love me daddy and me love me mommy. Soul man a give them a tis style eh, yeah. Warning to the underlet. There's a place, there's a time for.
What we say love will reign again?
Cause I know.
Them to go with them little dirty bad man, or who them hypocrite there?
There's a place, there's a time for everything.
We tell them say love will reign again 2025. Check the levels, alright!
I've got this love for you.
Pretty posse ladies, pretty posse ladies.
I've got this love for you. This love for you. Give you my whole life, I feel like we wanted to. And this love for you, this love for you. Deep in my heart, I feel we were born in love. This love for you, this love for you. Me, are you ready, we're going, nothing stopping us. You smile bright like the sun in the morning skies. When you're around, I enjoy every second of the time. There's no other place that I'd rather be.
What we say J A I radio, must give us some different music, man.
I've got this love for you. This love for you. Give you my whole.
What we say big up the world listeners out there? Big up the whole of Germany, why tune in still in a? Boomshits!
This love for you, this love for you. Me, are you ready, we're going, nothing stopping us.
Yeah, the German them tune in, nah!
We have our disagreements and cause sometimes, but after words you make it up, that a part of life. You never violate, the loyalty remain the same since the first day you. No more rain in this house. Ever since you became my friend. All I see, blue skies. Looks like, all the clouds are cloudy far day. I'm so glad we started. Smooth day. Good time. The rough waves have long subsided. Ever since you decided to be mine. I'm glad you took the time to be mine. It was my design, cause baby you will always be my girl. Baby, I will always love you. I appreciate all your sacrifices. Girl, I love you whole heart there.
What we say them tune your name, for the man them know them love the woman, the woman them know them love the man them. Straight!
Rising up my life. Love release the bondage. You still owe me, I spit your mind. Glad you took the time. You're mine.
Radio!
And baby you will always be my girl. Always be my girl. Oh yeah. Oh yeah. You're gonna be mine again.
Pretty posse ladies.
Again. Give you all again. How can I explain to you, baby? There's no thing you can't be in the world that I can't find. Few words can't explain.
What we say them tune your name, for the man them, I love the ladies. And the ladies that know them love the man them. Alright, straight!
Girl, you're pretty like a better fool's death. First up on the morning, girl.
Bulgaria, Ascena. Guam, big up France, Tuna. Saint Lucia. Jamaica. Alright!
How can I explain to you, baby? There's no thing you can't be in the world that I can't find. Few words can't explain. It's all I want, I'm for you. Tell me about my heart. I just wanna say hello.
Alright, what we say to the ladies now, Jacky, eh?
Girl, you're pretty like a better fool's death. First up on the morning, girl. Oh yeah. Bright like the sun that converts in morning.
Benoit!
That's so beautiful of you. How can I explain to you, baby? There's no thing you can't be in the world that I can't find. Few words can't explain. It's all I want, I'm for you.
Baby, can you?
Pretty posse ladies. It is a. Pretty posse them busy.
Excuse me, miss. What's your name? Can I be a sunshine in the rain? Smile so different, not the same. Beautiful energy, I entertain.
What we say pretty posse boomshits! With a thing called the boom hour, each and every Tuesday from 6 to 8 p.m. J A I radio. Voice to the one Busy Signal, what we say natural vibes rhythm? Alright ladies!
Excuse me, miss. What's your name? Can I be a sunshine in the rain? Smile so different, not the same. Beautiful energy, I entertain. Gonna be the same face on your brain. I give you joy, no need to complain. And I like to know that things that make you smile, baby, is that okay? Let me know when you're ready. Come on, come on, come on, come on, girl. You know I'll be waiting. Come on, come on, girl. Yeah. Inna me arms, this is the place that you belong. Long as you there with me, me ready to keep you warm. Living in love, we connect it up.
Yeah, we are to the ladies! Talk to them again, the busy.
Y'all are you, me want, can nobody no match up to you. Enough of them a try, but none of them no catch up to you. Need you in me life, and me a tell you it's up to you. Can you be my baby? I'm for you, my baby, eh. Me just come on them a try, but there's no face, eh. Do what it takes, me drive me crazy, eh. Just give me a date, and me a pull up a gate. Can go like, then I set it at eight, no light. Let me know when you're ready. Come on, come on, come on, come on.
Yes, busy talk to the ladies, come, call we love the ladies, come to our.
Yeah. Inna me arms, this is the place that you belong. Long as you there with me, me ready to keep you warm. Living in love, we connect it up, we carry on, yeah, yeah. Can you be my baby? Excuse me, miss.
Big and serious, check out what I go on in the world, you know. The whole of the south a freeze and the west coast a bundom. We read about this in my bible from where I pick me. Remember me tall, you know.
Eyes up again.
All who never pick up their bible later and read, and I better pick it up after I read.
Black man living in a perilous time. Got to strengthen your heart and your mind. Living in a perilous time. Can't afford to be left with the unwind. Living in a perilous time. That's the way that the system designed. Living in a perilous time. Still them can't stop the people from shine. Ah, yeah. Got to make it while the sunshine, ah, yeah. Love is the solution for me burn crime, ah, yeah. Got to make it while the sunshine, ah, yeah. Live up to the fullest.
Instincts they bringing the pain, yeah. I guess I suppose that them a confirmed that. The system is hard, but I'll me know say Babylon is over. Yes, I see judgment. Rising up, it's out there, yeah. My people now watch no face, in a cast we a send for burn pay god, yeah. Cause even in Africa, people are scared. That's why them a get rid of a play car fake. Men, this is.
Tell them, look what I've won in my world, 2025! Alright!
Contemplating me bless. It hard so cold, it's plus thirteen in your face. Cause if you drop a duck when getting up, you better make haste, or else your folk gonna step in your space. And if you can't keep up the kids, it's gonna step in your place. Cause it's a game with the filthy rich win. You pay, it a one from African people were slaves. Take your precaution, or send your class there. Yes, I see judgment. Rising up, it's out there, yeah. My people now watch no face, in a cast we a send for burn pay god, yeah. Cause even in Africa, people, 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 family. Baby father, baby mother, family, if you stay together, you will see these blessings are forever. Do not try to harm each other, two are you can make it better. That is what we prefer. Make with hope and pray. Cause family will always have what they need. Mommy smiles again, cause the bills are paid and everything is okay. I say, family. Proud of you, just like you proud of me, eh, eh. Family. Cause daddy never run away, eh, eh. It's a family, cause mommy is a champion. She taught me everything when we stand for. So family, eh, eh. Family, eh, eh. Family eh eh eh, family eh 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 Family are never enemy, you see the tree before you leave Keep ego and greed, set the speed, general, take the lead Mummy be sexy gal you want to be Be the queen of responsibilities and live the dream Make it reality, make it free and not for weed So we forgive and let it be Family
Family
Just like you proud of me eh eh eh
You hear that?
Family, daddy never run away eh 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 Family, cause mommy is a champion She taught me everything when you stand for Family eh eh eh, family, family
What was said this is J A I radio you don't know Britta Bossy Boomchats I and I uncle Eli alongside DJ Chubs you don't know with that thing called the boomahwa for the item Well you see this week you know Me now go do it like how me normally do it And just start mix a baga song and gain a baga music Ate 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 blah nah This week me a go feature one artist And me cannot listen this one artist Until me done play and bring each other see me And this artist so me a go feature this week is an artist from out of the United States Right here but it means a reggae artist Artist by the name of Ross Frasier Junior And who are they them just go and listen it because them have a album name I Am Conscious And who are they them get familiar with the man music them Say it's right now Ross Frasier I hear some who are you started for the item for me there Want them to just listen it and tell me own a feel bout it
Let me take you to a place Where there's peace and quiet and no destruction far Far, far away In this land full of love Come let me take you to the promised land far, far
Alright voice to the one Ross Frasier alongside oh
I'm just a rasta man Living in a Babylon forever Four hundred years They took us from Africa Exploiting slavery and committing murder forever Four hundred years
All who know me and know me good them know share them style of music and me really promote you know You see them other style of music they are good for the youths them and all these things But you see them tune ya And them tune of the youths them need forget for understand So them can't catch back them history because it's like There's a generational gap where the youths them don't remember them history Them just gone astray Them need for start catch up back Make them catch up back and see how the world would have just start run back right
Ross Frasier Junior
We said the south are freezing and the west coast are bundom Get your level
Let me take you to a place Where there's peace and quiet and no destruction far Far, far away In this land full of love Come let me take you to the promised land far
Yo P we walk one Yo 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 yo
I'm just a rasta man Living in a Babylon forever Four hundred years They took us from Africa Exploiting slavery and committing murder forever Four hundred years
What was the voice to the one Ross Frasier Junior?
Take these chains from around our feet Oh Jaja, please set us free We suffer For all so long Oh Jaja, please hear our plea Out of Newbie, straight over inna the land of the cush West of forest, sandstorm and burning anger they push Missing about planning and bush, them bones and
What was said big up the world listeners tuning in
They part a journey, doing life work
United Kingdom we see you not just Japanese yeah
Many confuse each other when it's just love Go farm up the food and go score it up nah nah Inna the mountain me meditate and I give thanks and I chill Acres by acres of conjure inna the hills A solid foundation for the youths that we are build We're days away then you know days are will Stay far far, let me take shine and peel Be a king them kill and that baby blood that's clean Not stop, chart down Babylon and tell Tell them free up the people, the people, the people
Man man me tell you now this is J A I radio Britta Bossy Boomchats With that thing called the boomahwa for the item nice and easy nah rush it Me just a trap it you know I'm saying When me say me a feature artist each and every week And me said this week me a feature Ross Frasier Junior Artist out Atlanta area Say it's right now Ross Frasier more I come give him a next tune for me there brother
Jai's our light and salvation He's my lord and savior
This is Ross Frasier alongside Anthony B
Ross Frasier Junior feature Anthony B The most I protect I and I, never let I go astray Yeah, yeah, yeah Although temptation comes my way Guide I from these sinful ways Yeah, yeah, yeah Yeah, 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 yeah Yeah, yeah, yeah Yeah, yeah, yeah Yeah, yeah, yeah
Alright voice to the one Ross Frasier Junior talk to them there
Never you worry yourself about the time Never you worry yourself about a thing When you work with mother nature that's a true blessing Protected and highly favored by the king Oh, nof get confused and run up and down Oh, them a scream on a ball when the fest start on Oh, Babylon chiste wa tumble down Oh, whoa Jaja protect the
Yes Ross Frasier talk to them there
Yeah, yeah, yeah Although temptation comes my way Guide I from these sinful ways Yeah, yeah, yeah Yeah, 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 yeah Yeah, yeah, yeah Yeah, yeah, yeah
Alright man Anthony B come see a team there
Ross Frasier Junior sit on the battlefield we a soldier Now watch the cut off jeans claps and pull over Man a rasta serious we no joke And we no baby, we no need no soda Tell them we marching on the road to Zion Everybody know say rasta a lion And we no put we faith in a man At the most I alone we rely on So we say The most I protect I and I, never let I go astray Yeah, yeah, yeah Although temptation comes my way Guide I from these sinful ways I and I want to know how we do know Well, well, well And this is Ross Frasier Junior alongside a living legend
What was said we a feature Ross Frasier
They might fool some people still they can't fool everyone Wake up, take a stand, cause we know what to go along Rise, cause our time like Moses and our time the universe is calling us And now you see the sign Mother earth makes you Babylon so them doom And for your reward, mother earth bless you with landslide or typhoon
And I hear what the man I said oh Mother earth top set with oh
How we do know
And I see what go up on mother earth right
It's Ross Frasier
Alright
And you alongside a living legend at the king Whoa, they might fool some people still they can't fool everyone Wake up, take a stand, cause we know what to go along Rise, cause our time like Moses and our time the universe is calling us And now you see the sign Mother earth makes you Babylon so them doom And for your reward, mother earth bless you with landslide or typhoon Violating the laws of nature And I behave like them are the almighty creator What a disgrace, home under human race Them system corrupt and them flag Tell them we no friend, fi kick what be wrong inna them face No more black sisters you can't rap Black man you great, you them coulda never under it Taffa reggae a strength to elevate, free up the prison gate Black man worry for traitor, less a life in an earthquake Hey Babylon and youth you know I read a judgement Fire off the page, fi them no say Jaja loves them Cause them a wicked, them a evil, them a serpent That's if I a know, because it urgent Let me see a youth you know I had just chosen Someone love me and use them around them Every black man is a king, so we a fit crown them From them pull up on them, you got feel on them What a disgrace, home under human race Them system corrupt and them flag Tell them we no friend, fi kick what be wrong inna them face No more black sisters you can't rap
I ain't done no says all about I and I uncle Eli I go play a few more tune and then DJ Chubs I come here come play some song for the item But before I and I man come off of this thing You know me a figure no one have few of them style ya Before me come off fight Say it's right now I said we want do it Ready, ready
Someday I'mma look at these trophies Tell my kids my story Someday I'mma write my name across the world Please don't worry Someday I'mma find my peace Someday outside these streets Something inside keep telling me that Someday I'mma find my way, my way Cha cha you cover me I pray Blessing them if you no lie where So the lesson I gonna up up this a little man Someday I'mma look at these trophies Tell my kids my story Someday I'mma write my name across the world Please don't worry Someday I'mma find my peace Someday outside these streets Something inside keep telling me that Someday I'mma find my way, my way Cha cha you cover me I pray Blessing them if you no lie where So the lesson I gonna up up this a little man Find my way, and I fall on the sky my grave For me you won't survive tonight night No time, baby it's my life tonight there Someday I'mma look at these trophies Tell my kids my story Someday I'mma write my name across the world Please don't worry Someday I'mma find my peace Someday outside these streets Something inside keep telling me that Someday I'mma find my Me get a clip on me load it No fair them a switch on me notice Man a profit like a Moses, show them love and a God Eh better keep with the roses No forgiveness, erase the glass on them nose bridge Devil a talking about god in my fortress What me do, me kill them with mortals
What was said J A I radio
Someday I'mma look at these trophies Tell my kids my story Someday I'mma write my name across the world Please don't worry Someday I'mma find my peace Someday outside these streets Something inside keep telling me that Tell them don't fuck up the place me dark it up the duds then dark you fuck Me chop the line and park it shut up Put chip on me shit out, call me coffee They say we not go brownly, I'ma fit true dog We always hunting food
Alright all this
Bust down rollie and a nothing way roller When me see me neck a freeze and a nothing way cold Now when me see me beach I never know never zone I'm standing line with that gears with that's a little That's got some ones so steady a guns Got blocks and pans with plenty of rounds One dunce man and me say no no I rode
Voice to the one Jamal ay
Feel so peanut patron Pushing on me brain make me high like a joint bird Water party me gay and gal a bite on the coat A one steel brick make she kneel on the floor Say she want stop me toe me say fi leave that alone How did they get, ones in a clothes A wine gal a get fancy alone Seventeen pon me belly and I can't see alone Automatic
Tell them again
And you say chase me dream You new Glock nine, safety screen Stay guard no me pray for me Stay the X four make you wake Come on dark you fall And if the skull a play hard man save him up Jumping out the Benz I'll start it up This a me jeep for me day in and me car keys shop Regular day me money sting bone garden Thirteen mil chopper who don't saw it Pull up the bed scoop and I under sit Duds bang in her hole, cash love crosses Splash on the Bulgari Gucci sign pon the sunglasses She said the money I'm turn that shit You ever clear money I wa It's a bitchy spider up the water's flow What a piece of pressure when she comes back down What a heaviness Girl it's obvious, it ain't hard to tell Now you could do some damage with that bumper where you got You know I like a challenge so come show me where you got What you can do Fin it like a crow make it collapse Let me feel the way, it's bad and dangerous, yeah Stop wonder if me can man it Bring it come and you make me angle it Grapple cleave and dismantle it You say each sheet big like one planet What a day when me rest me hands pon it When you start shake like a tambourine like that, like that Balance for me go up and down like a trampoline Now you could do some damage with that bumper where you got You know I like a challenge so come show me where you got What you can do Fin it like a crow make it collapse Let me feel the way, it's bad and dangerous, yeah Me love stretch mark, fire about the charm I miss like that Bad news Love when you go down Girl baby go down Love when you go down Love when you go down Sunday Monday, please I like Ex-girlfriend, clean at nights You know me shouldn't trouble like Jesus Christ Fresh like my beard like me butters Pretty little pussy I'm feel like diet Then I the pussy I mean I wise That only I makes you feel right
March 28 UBS Arena
Skin glinge and I carry no order Like I love you
Solid life
Me love it when I chew it back Talking I chew it back Up and down she go rollerboard
What was said the Wave Music Fest March 28 UBS Arena Not good again
I love it when you go down Love it when you go down I love it when you go down And violence we a deal with Blood clot, we a deal with violence Them boy they don't bother tall Shot them one now Say the boom like a ball Tell me they asleep like a
Who else there UBS
Them boy they don't bother tall The last man this say the boom like a ball A black cream fall in the time in my dark
28
I'm tired, high five man, pull up on the chicken squeeze it When the on the block say the money
March 28 alright
This tough fuck come a met car people fi dead me Boom up a fine time beat couple let Spain town killer who pay the road And if you don't come a road you get it in a bed Sky laughing ding dong Push me gun in her face and squeeze off Speed of bread mode them a weak heart So me cheap gone and I call it like Big Doc Chip up this a little come up Crack your DJ map, can no bag along chat Two clip tape up my ass tap not that Make a day me a beat it up in a dissonant hell Everything caught up And me roll up, left boy full up, life is hang cold up And none of them can't talk to my total
Yes gang
Save the place and I shoot up
What was said This is J A I radio Britta Bossy Boomchats Who else the part which you are March 28 who else
I come from Jamaica, I come like
Tell you say the 28th of March round a UBS Wave Music Fest
Yo slingers, 400k gimme this Glock shit 800k fee bro Gunpowder it chopping on me Rolex Magic maggot touch it look with his shoes Darkness put a belt on the 15 now Isabelle for we never miss loop Feel like mama could mean a badness Get tricked through she pretty and cute man Skill him a move smooth with the man blues All now them no know who's in me nine years Headless body food DVD Nah shoes defend enemy I own a DVD Night crew get turn and nobody even go buy soup Abay you a try prove, a young one family you gonna disappoint children When you hear say Million spent pon nine night Hundred fee funeral suit Big money spent pon casket
Voice to the one Chronic Law
Remember we ban fee partner
What's a March 28 not good again Round a UBS Arena in a Long Island
Pretty and cute butcha Dark though cigarette and mute Make wind up yonder in a prison confused Who know when I'm militant youth and nobody can heal Fi go see the dance shoes Rifle longer than cricket as tool and the clip them bury them bury them My say slingers Say the clot just choking Hear camera light like something spooky Say tell a pussy say don't fuck around anything you Not care where you from, give a fuck where you been to Kill up on the weekend time me sing tune Boy head open up like tin food, chip block Slingers, real life killers, your skills panchigas Apart from we a feed pantigas Set them up with a neat gal tickers We bust out them head like a tree and slippers
Voice to the one Joshie Man them for free up Joshie man
Uptown uptown we with it Pussy them no bother just them mouth and them breath Drink a little special and I smoke cigarette And feel them bad me go up my head now Seen friend blood a bleed and him start vomit Here squad the syringe but me nah panic Me nah listen them blood clot a calip None of them have the heart fi go hard Joshie No time, no time Can't jack killer upon the payroll Couple murder up on the phone line Rifle a select up like it play some Have couple killer anyway me throw up I know that The hard man we body anyway Diana tucks we body anyway Uptown we body anyway No fuck Hear me nah football Who I say them mother them girlfriend tell me them don't sure Yeah, hear me nah football, boy say them mother, them girlfriend, tell me them do sure. Yeah, rise up a 4-4, me dark, them a kill a long time, when I just since we grow. Them a go rest in peace, rifle for turn on and he take it peace. Live just in peace, should do this, a man from the West Indies. Hear the six feet, pretty casket, where you get with dreams? So no mess with the weed, no mess with the weed. Pain, tell about pain, who already travel in a ear like plane, we chop up a headed boy body like Shane. One in a your face, put a dub it to me name, yo, Spain, and no ring game. Pussy jack tough, put one in a him brain, for me rifle, no Shane, walk with the pan the main. Show you say me a kill a long time and no fame, pussy, it like that, that yard ass produce. Your friend them run, call if you them sell out you. Hey, hear rifle up me bay, and if a pussy hold, feel like say them be dry, we make a boy my rough like god. Up in the sky, way up in the sky, way up in the sky. Any boy touch he road a danger, six pans got the owner tailor. And a disaster like malaria, me be deal with the yard like me own the place ah. Said tell a boy, fi run on, me brave the clock, the chick clock, we turn on a stranger. I tell her, we not got the car, no wear, so now a rifle badness, we nice, we nice. One day, if your boyfriend knows, say me are your best friend. Long time me a broke in a your world from my beyond red sand. Private touch and I'm pretending that I'm Benton, daddy say fi use your ribs in every sentence. For fuck a bag of galleys, very expensive. Liquor and ride eh, not my sliding, me know the vibe eh good. Coming for the night, babe, my love a timing, you know your life be good. She a come, she a vibrate, louder than a siree, come she come right, be good. She had the time of her life, me too.
What was that, March 28, UBS Arena, Folly on life!
None of money, what a fucked up feeling, pull up on the scheme, now I'm bust down freeze. When you coming on me carrier, you know you're not going back. From a day in a your pussy run a couple laps, the air sea cool, what the fuck is that? From my school days, I do better, check a chat. Me like you, my girl, we on go, tonight is the night we have fun. Liquor and ride eh. Up in I town. Up in I town, so me drift in I grown, me cologne and a thirty-nine pound. That's M active, sick in I tongue, now if you say a rap, girl you know a clown. She put me pan line up in I cloud, that good gal a whenever the born, ten million I safe that me keep in I house. Riches stink like smack night crowd, look good. Pon the eyes and bet, surprise it tie, solid every diamond leg, Gucci box, stack a brick, sky long case. Right now, me a drive and sleep. Money used to play iron, say guitar to find, when it find, I man said. A Mary jeans, this I don't buy one free, winter round, me knock the island first. Urban tea, out of niche, when me pocket travel with a house from beach, dripping out the G-wag and...
Voice of the one, Shino!
At the beach, make the ground unleash. Alone pounds on leg, which is god, make a float for weight. Four mil, fifty bill, we a post pon tape, you know say? Up in I town, so me drift in I grown, me cologne and a thirty-nine pound. That's M active, sick in I tongue, now if you say a rap, girl you know a clown. She put me pan line up...
Now, Mr. March 28, me a go again, our next artist, we're the ponnet show, the March 28, UBS Arena! Ah! Ay yo, ay yo, ay yo, ay yo!
She get your flexy, I need all of them lift, lift, bend, ski, and cut and drift. Them nose, so my dark, tell a, tell a test me, them nose, so my mad, regular me a chip. Try to make fan clad, regular with chain shift, friends scoop that broad, regular with chain drip. Cartier pon my class, some pon my left wrist, pon my hand. Dark guy know me charge, you know, pop on it up, now me party cup. Man a ball and ass, where me sharty go, fin me a spin away, party turn dark. Right now, me charge, you know, pop on it up, now me party cup. Swingin' boots, tell it, say me pass the rub, right now, me charge. Go tell a reporter, say me had chip out, bad, it teleport, try me top, gals, gals. Tell me fling out cash, fanta, sing when me sing.
Craft God!
If a real or fake, chat, see bout that, and if a ramp with this, sing out that.
Yeah, man, give them some lyrics, run them here, Wah Wah!
We no live out ya, Pentos, Big Benz, rich out ya, Louis D symphony, that's rich order. Raw rumming, I me liver and I sick order, have a Philly, Ali Ganey, she a me daughter. Transform for me now, gal, dead a night, resurrect like Jehovah. The dung tree, pat upon me, I stop, dung zoo. Dark guy know me charge, you know, pop, pop on it up, now, now. Six screens, watch upon the big screens. Girl them love we bad, because we drive them hard, see. Have a Philly, Ali Ganey, she a me daughter. Transform for me now, gal, dead a night, resurrect like Jehovah. The dung tree, pat upon me, I stop, dung zoo. Dark guy know me charge, you know, pop, pop on it up, now, now. Six screens, watch upon the big screens. Girl them love we bad, because we drive them hard, see. If a real, we a beat every time, please give me bro, man the vibes of my life. Feeling the vibes, the girl a walk like, I. Need I, I mean need I, I mean need I, need I, I mean need I, I mean need I. Bae's come on now, hold up, make me talk to you, fi get check on her, baby. Make me take a shopping and suck me now, now. Boy, you want Benz or W, take it, fi go eat lunch, ah. No worry bout the waist man, me we turn him in a show, so get active, you my bad. Clean from me head, ha me toe, me... If a real, we a beat every time, please give me bro, man the vibes of my life. Feeling the vibes, the girl a walk like, I.
What was that, J A I radio, Pretty Posse Boomchat! Iron Eye Uncle Eli, just again a nice and easy juggling. Me a give you know, two more song, you hear what I said, two more songs ago, and then I'mma turn it over to DJ Chubbs, so DJ Chubbs can't come here now. Some of them extra, different, different, different styles, and some of these drugers styles as well. But you see right now, this is my second to last song, hear this one now. Alright, oh, me love Father God, and Father God love me, ah!
We both wave, wave until morning come, done weezed with God and him tell me say do it. What them sin all is come, you not live right, but you not live wrong. Them say we do it and them still want.
You hear that? You hear that? Man I live right, but man I live wrong, you hear that? I really think. Them tune are different! Some of them tune, everyone ask, are you a night party, them to man a nighttime dark? Come on, man, enough of the broke, you poor, look hard on them thing, them on, come on, man!
We both wave, wave until morning come, done weezed with God and him tell me say do it. What them sin all is come, you not live right, but you not live wrong. Them say we do it and them still want doubt it, in a malu we but them still can't judge me. So cups up, yeah, we getting toasted, cups up, make a bus that to life. Deli bartender say bring more ice. Just long in place, I'ma never check your price, jump on the stairs, back a girl in on my side. As a real singer, we a live it starlight, feel so wrong, but it feel so right.
Benoit!
Overflow, me there in a me, on a close, a mighty story. All that a hard, me like a one life, we just a enjoy.
What was that?
Really can make it overflow, when you see me, I feel me.
Because everybody wanna know them love, Father God, Father God love you, you love yourself, alright!
Oh, man, I forgot to party, I hope bring your vibe, yeah, for member, say a dark, it soon a dim me light. Me see all the water, woman, leave your mind, cause them girls telling me, I miss you really like, yeah.
Sometimes in a life, do you know? You can't have your brethren them, or your brethren them, or your sister them, you know? But more time, you have to cut them off, you know? Come more time, when you check the levels, you know, them are some big. Well, you know, we not even have a say the word, but them know the word, them still, you know? More time, you have to cut the link with certain people, because you see some of them, no for them are just some like a hold on, you know? No for them are just some opportunists, no for them, we have got telling us something about them, you see them people, we have got telling about them right now. Final one.
The Lord protect me from my friends, quick them turn your enemies. The Lord protect me from my friends, quick them turn your enemies. The Lord protect me...
Final! Watch them! No, no matter how much you help them out, them going like, say you not help them out, burn, we a burn them. Whoa, twenty twenty-five!
Quick them turn your enemies.
Oh!
The Lord protect me from my friends.
Protect me from them, protect me, protect me!
Everything you do for them, if I don't say I fuck them. And every time you try to teach them, the two thing them go and like, say you not help them. You give them everything they max for, I never end up turning back, yeah, now I know.
Voice of the one, Creanio, alright, what was your name?
Them why you die, me realize, them why I feel on the place where you reside. Me cope dealing, I know the deal, yeah.
Benoit!
One day will live with.
Oh!
My god, the hell is break.
Benoit!
Lost my love with mankind, just for the fear that's there. One day will live with.
Yeah!
My god, the hell is break, see, lost my love with...
I you know, who want Creanio, the ponnet track, yo, ay yo!
Friend switch, I left my call in a my heart space, so I'ma find home in a dark place. Move me envy, I show you, I'm a dark face, it's a my last man, I'm watching my last days. If somebody tell... The Lord protect me from my friends, quick them turn your enemies. The Lord protect me from my friends, quick them turn your enemies.
What was that, mine final, turn it over to DJ Chubbs right after this, final one, burn with bad mind, friend them! Alright, Benoit! Tell them! Alright! What was that, that is our next artist for March 28, over UBS Arena, remember?
The whole dream, runs on sugar, you no mind. Them why you die, me realize, them why I feel on the place where you reside. No drop me god.
Hear them lyrics, eh? Benoit! Wave Music Fest! March 28, Long Island, UBS Arena. Long Island, New York. Creanio! Yeah, man, Dexter Daps, Vice, Craft God, yeah.
Watch where you are do, watch where you are say.
Chronic Law. Folly on. Yeah. Man likes gang, yeah. Over the March, 28th of March. Yeah, man, one day I them just link up, buy a ticket, and all these things, everything is all good. Link up Ticketmaster for your tickets! Call for a link, man, man have no ticket tag, you know, body, man have none. You know, better link Ticketmaster, Ticketmaster have them, that may I tell you now, straight. Boomchat! And I'm out, you know what I'm saying? So you see right now, like how me done play some song and thing, and thing, and thing, right now, it's all about me, I can turn it over to DJ Chubbs, make DJ Chubbs come play some song for the item. So you see right now, it's all about DJ Chubbs, I heard time, but we are gonna make my bossy come here now, two commercial. So you see right now, Tony, run two commercial for the item.
We are the female singers, say, yes! Sherri S is the best.
Ladies and gentlemen, kings and queens, join Sherri S. And Ruho, and J A I radio, chit chat with Sherri S.
She a education, rock selection, I understand, you be number one, shorty nigga boy, Sherri S, she can.
Artists, entrepreneurs, business people, anyone else doing great work in your community, please join in, from eleven thirty AM until one thirty PM.
Sherri S, you drive them crazy, on and on.
Each and every Sunday, chit chat with Sherri S, live on Twitch TV, IG, Facebook, Mixcloud, and J A I radio. Interested in sponsoring this show? Call Sherri at three four seven nine nine four six four six eight. Let's chit chat with Sherri S.
People, 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 what was that, it's all about each and every Tuesday, from what? From six to eight PM, which part? Round a J A I radio, you don't know, we have a thing called Pretty Posse Boomchat! With a thing called the Boomawa, you don't know, Iron Eye Uncle Eli, Lamson, the brother Chubbs. We going come here now, some of that comfort, some of that calypso, we going here now, some of everything, cause that different vibes. Is that thing called new vibes, old vibes, every vibes, catchy vibes, Boomchat vibes, Boomchat! Thing called J A I radio, each and every Tuesday, from six to eight PM, check it out, Pretty Posse loud.
Talent, over, hype, hype, hype. Trust and believe, you already knows your boy DJ Eazy, one of the hosts of Talent Over Hype. Big up Brown, trust and believe, J I re radio is the station you need to tune into, every Friday morning at nine AM.
J A I radio, just make sure you tuning and keep a lock to J A I, take it away!
I bet, Etta, check this out, now that I got your full and undivided attention, you are tapped in to DJ Chubbs, Pretty Posse sounds. And stop fucking playing it, turn the fuck up.
What's going on, what's going on, DJ Chubbs in the building, Pretty Posse sound, Boom Hour Tuesdays is here. Eli hit you with the nice vibes, I'm here for the nice, different vibes. I got some soca to play, I got some Afro beats, I got some new qualify, we gonna switch it up nicely. We gonna start off with the soca, watch this.
Hey! Been working for a while. I barely see my child, eh, been working for so long.
What's the soca fans out there? Come on!
Been working for a while. I barely see my child, eh, been working for so long. I barely know these songs. Well you see, today they wanna clock out. Bustel me anything, then I'll walk out. A ticket in my pocket and it pop out.
Where the soca people there?
Round to boot in my mouth, yeah, yeah. Today they wanna clock out. Bustel me anything, then I walk out. A ticket in my pocket and it pop out.
Boom Hour Tuesday, DJ Chubbs, Uncle Eli, we here, Pretty Posse! We gonna turn up different, it's Boom Hour Tuesdays.
It's sweet to me, sweet to me, it's sweet to me, sweet to me, it's sweet to me, sweet to me, it's sweet to me, sweet to me. It's sweet to me, sweet to me, it's sweet to me, sweet to me, it's sweet to me, sweet to me, it's sweet to me. Dip me head in the bag of sugar.
I need all my ladies to get up over the chairs right now.
Sweet to me.
Three, two, three, two, one, come on!
Ya show me the corny pride, jump bump when I start to dive. You pick with the coconut, you tune, tune, got the little light. And if you sleep inside, just so go and sink inside. Do me anything, you like your candy or me sugar? One for my rum sugar. Two for my rum sugar. Three for my rum sugar. Just give me rum sugar.
Uh huh.
My rum sugar. Six for my rum sugar. Seven for my rum sugar. Plenty, plenty rum sugar. Dip me head in the bag of sugar. It's sweet to me, sweet to me, it's sweet to me, sweet to me, it's sweet to me, sweet to me.
Big truck coming down the track, I so untuck when I carry nuts. And I feel like I was child feel, cause I was running and up in the box. Mind racing and blood a rust. And his voice side, man, the more I watch, and the closer that the band get, and my heart skipping like double down. So long I been ready. So long I been waiting, love. So long I been ready. So long I been waiting. So long I been ready. So long I been waiting, love.
What we doing? What we doing? What we doing? Come on!
Who's bris up and can't bris up? They all up on a man. Bris up and bouncing like a ball. Bris up, they all up on the wall. Black dust in the air, bris up. Only thing I want with all of that, the road now. Hands up in the air. Hands them up in the air. Hands up in the air. Hands them up in the air. Hands up in the air. Hands them up in the air. Hands up in the air. Hands them up in the air. We out in the road today. Out in the road today. Out in the road today. We out in the road, man. We out in the road today.
We gonna do that, we doing something different!
We out in the road today. We out in the road. Everybody gotta hurry. We giving them our real affair. Prepare with somebody, say! Got me ready now.
Say I'm falling, falling, I'm falling. As I lay in my bed with my head to the ceiling. Say I'm drowning alone and I'm lost in my feelings.
All the Soca fans out there!
Somebody send me a sign, cause you know that I need it. Can't even come back to me, cause you know you're my healer. I said it's okay, it's my therapy. Therapy. My therapy. It take away all the anxiety. Anxiety. My remedy.
Patrice Robert!
We all need love. Jump up and show me love. When I pass, show me love. Together, say we all need love. Jump up and show me love. When I pass, show me love. Soca make we shine up together. No place that I run from. Shine up together. Right now is our energy. Shine up together. Soca is our partner. Shine up together. I tell you so much of my mind, but I can't sleep. I stressing all the time. I can't stop it, cause I'm always on the grind. My body not keep up. Deep back and all of my mind all week. Take your troubles and throw them all away. Get ready to run across the stretch. Get ready, get ready. Give me energy. Feel energy.
Shout out Saint Lucia! United Kingdom, we see you. Germany, Saint Kitts.
It take away all the anxiety. Anxiety. My remedy. I can't let it.
Bad reputation. Don't play with me, me, me. Tell me you're the bad reputation. Something telling me to mash up. Something telling me no. Something telling me to. Something telling me go. I want to go to Harvard. Hear what me why you do?
Three, two, three, two, come on!
Shake, don't shake. Shake, don't shake. Shake, don't shake. When I revenge.
I have a bad reputation. Don't play with me, me, me. Tell me you're the bad reputation. Something telling me to mash up. Something telling me no. Something telling me to in the place. Something telling me go. I want to go to Harvard. Hear what me why you do? Swing everything in the bar.
I say, oh, the shake, don't shake. Shake, don't shake. Shake, don't shake. When I revenge. Hey, check, check on. Break, don't break. Break, don't break. Watch on the way we start. Yeah, no top on the cards. Beat on the money, run, run, run. All the friend on the line. Love the party, the wine. Everything in our midst. Head tie up and no sense. Talking of sweetness inside you down. I just can't.
That was the hype, bro. Let's do it down.
Love to drink with my friend. Come on!
House of hype, bro, let's do it down.
So I reach inside, I feeling take over me. It remind me of the first time I touch party. I cannot deny the vibes, the shock was so heavenly. On a candy cloud, everything just feels so sweet, yeah. When I look on the left, it's so much pretty gal. Fitting in the carnival with a bag of green on me, like a criminal. A tip a wine on a girl, see the team all around way. And we having a good time. Yes, we having a good time. Do you remember the time I told you about the very first line? When I ask, you been to a party? Plenty women looking so nice. We must be in paradise.
Nice Soca music!
You had a time to remember. It's only one part of my now. And the dreams ya got, me don't be my tender. Them just a lava lava and parlay for me, eh. I don't give up. Don't give up. Them just a run off their mouth and sip them for me, please, please. I don't give up. Don't give up. Take care of the minor for me. Take care of the minor for me. The more them talk, the more them chat, the more jam bless me. Take care of the minor for me.
Boom Hour Tuesdays is nice!
Cause the more them talk and the more them jam, jam bless me. Bad mind can stress me. Them don't impress me. Them a run off their mouth and talk like the informal of the century. Your hate and envy. I pretend to be friendly. Patrice again. Them a smiley, your fears and stuff. And you mustn't act trustful, then you. Oh, gosh. Best job ever. Best job ever.
House Soca music so nice!
I wanna hold me, hold me darling, and give me the best charm of my life. Best charm of my life. Best charm. Baby, hold me and wrap your arms around me. Give me the best charm of my life. Best charm of my life. That's what I got. Do what you want now. Do what you want now. Do what you want now. Come give me the sweetest ride. And I go holding back. And I go holding back, baby. Do what you want now. Working for me. Well, it's a long, long time. Since I last bumped you up in a party. I never since that time, that time. You just really crossing my mind, boy. My mind.
What we here for?
Give me an experience, baby. I never forget. The way you put that working darling. Had me soaking wet. And anytime I think about it, I just feel a heat. Cause I remember.
You be waiting for me, guys? Here for one thing!
Good vibes. Good people. Good vibes. Push your mouth if you don't like people.
One thing!
Well, if you have nothing good to say. Don't say nothing at all, just sunshine boy your way.
Hear what he said? I don't gotta say much. Twenty twenty-five, five!
Yo, 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 yo. Good vibes. Good people. Good vibes. Good people. Push your mouth if you don't like people. Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, if you have nothing good to say. Don't say nothing at all, just sunshine boy your way. Cause we don't want them negative vibes and energy. Best you move from wrong way. Stay far from me.
Boom Hour Tuesdays!
Yeah, good vibes. Good vibes. Good vibes. We outside, let me have a good time. Good time. Good time. It's way up now, don't kill the vibes. Kill the vibes. Kill the vibes. And don't trump me the line, eh. Move now. Higher to a tight, eh. Move now. Yeah, 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 yeah. They say it is a real love company. But eyes don't my scene at all, at all. You see that kind of energy, yeah. It's that self that's run from. And if you on that, stay far from me. Cause we don't like that, stay far from me. Your vibes heavy and I want it all for me. Where you are for me? You see once me head done nice, I don't care where you're talking about. Take a shot and nosh your mouth. Only ones that a negative thing coming out. Take a shot and nosh your mouth. It's good vibes. Good people. Like what we on there? No evil. Don't forget what the elders teach you and me teach you. Now if you have nothing good to say. Don't say nothing at all, just sunshine boy your way. Cause we don't want them negative vibes and energy. Best you move from wrong way. Stay far from me.
If you're looking for sweetness to put inside a basket, I am the hardy, hardy, hardy.
We doing something for this Tuesday!
Pop the bomb, drop every bomb, bomb down to the ground. Everything fresh, the market open. Looking for sweetness to put inside a basket, I am the hardy, hardy, hardy. Blinkin' market. And if you're looking for sexy to throw inside a basket, I am the hardy, hardy.
Little late twenty twenty-four Soca!
You got the chili bomb on cam. Sticking us running down all your hand. This eh, what a sweet woman. This eh, what a nice woman. Skin like cocoa in the sun. And a heart to find like oven a plum. This eh, what a sweet woman. This eh.
What place you more than switch of the Apple Beats?
Juicy yes. Who is that? Only juiciness. Bumpa looking like a. I tend to be juiciness. Everything fresh, look at the shell. When you come list, everything don't sell. If you're looking for sweetness to put inside a basket, I am the hardy, hardy, hardy. Blinkin' market. And if you're looking for sexy to throw inside a basket, I am the hardy, hardy, hardy. Blinkin' market. I said, I said. So when you see your family, you white low, white low, white low, white low, white low. When you see your friend, you start to white low, white low.
Boom Hour Tuesdays!
Turn it on. Your man don't know that you're careless. Getting on bad like that. Girl, what you do? Tell me now, bro. Your girl know that you breaking your back. Belt in your waistline, that jamming on a bumper. Cause every time you go home, you looking high, you go cause problem. Oh, yeah, you go cause problem. Oh, yeah, you go. If you constantly telling lie, 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 you go cause problem. Oh, yeah, you go cause problem. You threaten my taste like fantasy. Don't forget. You must go back more. Attack defense. Don't forget. You must go back more. So when you see your family, you white low, 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 low. When you see your friend, you start to white low, 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 low. Hide your face. Pounce your waist. Enjoy yourself. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Every time I take a trip, I feel like whining. Like whining. Oh, oh, oh. And every time I short a thing, I feel like lightning. Like lightning.
Come on!
Don't wanna be inside. Gonna be outside tonight. Do we have to tell you no for sure? I having a good time.
Last one!
I have no time. I feel dynamite. Every time, every time, every time. From the time I take a sip, I ready to go. Go, oh, 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 oh. Go, oh, 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 oh.
What he said?
And from the time that I look ahead, I just need some more. More, oh, 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 oh. More, oh, 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 oh. Cause I'm doing a moon and I'm up in my hand and I'm winding up all the night. Everybody focuses jam, jam, jam. I believe on that is the plan. It's compass inside and numbers outside. So I hope all you don't know. When you crack, you see that everything now.
Soca people!
Every time I take a trip, I feel like whining. Like whining.
How you feel?
And every time I short a thing, I feel like lightning. Like lightning.
Each and every Tuesday, we here. Do remember March twenty-eighth. UBS Arena. Wade Festival. Too much artists to count. It was one of the biggest shows of the year. I don't know who could match. I don't know what's going on, but this show was well put together. We gonna switch off to the Apple Beats. Nice and easy. DJ Chubbs, Uncle Eli, Pretty Posse sound, we here.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, eh.
Hold up!
Hey! It's good to get it all right. You more young than my age. And I'm not ready to bring you on my life. And I'm not ready to pay you on my life, I die in my money. I'm watching more, only like to bounce in my soul, I really. Kinney cut it, bro, so one year be me more. Take care with my pain and my struggle, me let me when I get it go. I don't make you do me wonders, don't matter because I go on the path. Give my time, I feel your time. The times say, oh, the dog does not give you a thought. Only by your second, oh, 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 you want more, say you want more.
Nice!
Oh, do it for me now. I don't trust, it's yesterday, still raining today. Feel every light who does that, every day, at the end of the day. Let me sing, baby, not like his other. It's yesterday, still raining today. Feel every light who does that, every day, at the end of the, the end of the day.
Happy, nice, sad, be nice, yeah. Omo, I don't mean it wise, I don't maximize, I don't sacrifice.
I know you gonna dig this.
Compromise, compromise, yeah. Omo, I no go compromise, make a.
Nice Apple Beats! Come on!
Anticipate when they go, get through this. I put my heart for your soul.
Alive!
Time in it, got on my stove. Better view, I'm on the throw. Game true, like a demolition man. Run after match, run of applause, ball on the oar. This is the boss, tap the rush, they know we stop, let's discuss. A demolition man, man of the match, run of applause, ball on the oar. This is the boss, they tap the rush, they know we stop, thank the Lord.
Nice!
I don't want you to see me downcast, even though you left me down bad. And I've been dealing with anxiety, I try not wear my sobriety. I'm running out of sativa, I need a doctor, I'm calling my dealer again. For the pain and anxiety, I cannot escape this feeling. I'm a game effect, baby, yeah, every day, just move you time me. Can I cook for the rich?
Nice Apple Beats!
No shame, no shame, no shame.
Song named Rockin' Shit. Artist named Tim Larray.
I don't want you to see me downcast, even though you left me down bad. And I've been dealing with anxiety, I try not wear my sobriety. I'm running out of sativa, I need a doctor, I'm calling my dealer again. For the pain and anxiety, I cannot escape this feeling.
Switch!
I'm a game effect, baby, yeah, every day, just move you time me. Can I cook for the rich, la? Ain't no joke, but no business, la. Give me something I can use to calm down. But how I go still doin' a touchdown? Right now, I'm on a vacation. I don't know when I'm gonna come back down, ever back down. I am a jet, she'll ocean, bing, 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 bing. When I begin to realize, now so we don't together, vim, 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 vim. What is a one-way flag? Never that starlight, never dim, 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 dim. You keep on shining all the time. But you go now, she love to bing, 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 bing. And if you're gonna take.
They call me Jana.
DJ Skip it, can we divide?
Everybody knows, and so I try to. I'm gonna be low.
You gonna dig this.
Then we go show them again. I'm not the type where they do a honor. Come back with their ego, nice walk on. See light your love, don't hide your love. Oh, I tell you. I give you love where you get tender. Carry your mother like a bumper. January to December, defender, you're defender. I give you love where you get tender. Carry your mother like a bumper. January to December, defender, you're defender. Wait for me, let's make it all the way. Bitch, you is no option, nah. Who is mine for me? Stay with me all the night. Bitch, you, I can hold you, my wow, wow, wow. Cause I don't put down my trust in you. Now you didn't make me the buy for true. Just like a car drive, you call on my time. For so long, you follow you go make a.
Hold up!
Tell me if I'm the way for you. Follow me, make a no grace for you. Cause my heart, it gets a place for you. I am my only good day for you. I give you love where you get tender. Carry your mother like a bumper. January to December, defender, you're defender.
Nice, all from me!
You were once a girl, but now you're the woman. Show back, back, giving, taking, giving, it's soon, yeah, yeah. If you leave me, I'm again, I'm feeling sober. Girl, I go the walk for two. But if you need all, all, I go back through. I'm lost in my feelings, I guess it's real. This is the lowest I've ever been. I turned down you down, who fuck I see? And I be wanting all your love, but I don't need.
You see, Pretty Posse, we play for what? K R Radio, Boom Hour Tuesday!
You know I see the ghost, I'm looking for the real one. But, and if I get to see one, all I show you, girl, is true love in our life. Cause now you dey pull me out of control. I'm getting my zone. I know you feeling alone.
Get used to these songs!
You be gonna pour me now, stand me now. For your love me, I stay for a vision. You know you bad, bad, girl, you can't tell me. You can see shadow by me. Bitch, you my teacher, me. The job better say, oh, my dear, don't you? Bitch, you my baby, so. The new luxury's up on these days. Give me space, I need clarity. Coop out of town, give me views, I need balcony. Got my love, yeah, I got to know. Baby, you know, you be heavy on me.
One of the two! Run the track! While Eli was gone, I sat down, listen to some music. Pretty Posse!
The new luxury's up on these days. Give me space, I need clarity. Coop out of town, give me views, I need balcony. Got my love, yeah, I got to know. Baby, you know, you be heavy on me. So open my eyes, say. Where you gonna stay? I know, and I know. And I know, he said, wow. My sweetest tab, who shot that? Let me push some money, why you let me put it back? Why you sell it too long, I don't know, yeah. Let me feel you by the sea, let me taste you in between, I don't lose.
Come on!
Maybe fuck I miss love. Smoking on some fine Colorado. Lessons on you got obrigado. Me na John Chris, John Chris. Say I miss you bad. I'm on a road, ten days till I miss you bad. Put you on a flight, leave your friends, cause I miss you bad. Ain't no such a nothing, if I still I miss you bad. I miss you bad, bad.
Gunja Man!
Body man, hold your peace, I did my side, I like my ganja. Body man, hold your peace, I did my side, I like my ganja. I don't wanna lie, I just wanna bless my mother.
What we smoke? What we do? Every day, every night!
Yeah, I'm on the road, road, road. Every single day on the go, go.
Excuse me, is King Fats on the mix?
Boom Hour Tuesday, 2025 is gonna be crazy. We got a lot of this store for y'all. We getting better and better. Come on!
Body man, hold your peace, I did my side, I like my ganja. Body man, hold your peace, I did my side, I like my ganja. I don't wanna lie, I just wanna bless my mother.
What we doing? March 28th, UBS Arena! Hey!
Yeah, I'm on the road, road, road. Every single day on the go, go, go. Try to get the cash on the road, road, road. If you give me time, I go blow, blow, blow. Yeah, oh, only go, go, go. Let me take your girl, make me go, go, go. Tell my sir, make me go, go, go. Make me give you love, make me go, go, go.
You know my love, you know my love. So you take my pain away, oh my. If you like, say you drop my money. Yeah, yeah, you drop my money, darling. Monica, Monica, I will do anything you want, Monica.
What you girls there, man?
It is simple, no other girl find you too. You can't fix her, she can't think too. Your face is so simple. Uh, she's a girla, man a girla, oh, you a girla. My sister, my whole world.
I didn't mean to make you cry. Me say I don't know why. She not just the man. I snap that girl, they laugh. I didn't mean to make you cry. Me say I don't know why.
I'm proud of myself right now.
She not just the man.
First time, we getting locked up!
Hey, check this out, this your boy Michael Moraw, AKA Mike Will. You are.
What kind of girls we want? What kind of girls we like?
She say she caught me, they call me, call me. Say who be that girl with the coma, boom. She love me, she want they stress me. Boy, I call him, me, hello. Elly more, more, they don't treat me. Snap chat, girls on this evening. We big back, I have a booty. I know who follow I get. I'm proud of you, I no go follow I get. Yeah, I'm proud of you, I no go follow I get. Yeah, for you, I go change my ways, and it's up to you. Make you know you's me play, yeah. Say make you know you's me play, yeah. Yeah, for you, I go.
Come on! Boom Hour Tuesdays, Uncle Eli, DJ Chugg, Pretty Posse sound!
I didn't mean to make you cry. Me say I don't know why. She not just the man.
Ça fait dans le crétin, y a pas de magie. Si on vient, on prend tout comme ça, y a pas de cachet. Pas de semblant, full baby dans quatre matiques. Elle habite solo et ça c'est fantastique.
What you say?
Y a les baby, c'est large et c'est great. Je t'en ai porté moi, tell me, si je t'épousais, mon dieu. Précis comme le samedi à Yakuza. Si tu marches with me, babe, c'est doudre. La carte des blagues disent, alleluia. Da, da, da. Yo, jude! Précis comme le samedi à Yakuza. Si tu marches with me, babe, c'est doudre. La carte des blagues disent, alleluia.
What you singing?
I'm a je le t'aime, ni. Da, da, da. Bini, bini, pat me. Da, da, da. Raide en Lamborgine. Da, da, da. J'ai une soussade, cambe, da, da, da. Ramenez la, ramenez. Da, da, da.
Hey, check this out, this your boy.
Da, da, da. Ramenez la, ramenez. Da, da, da. J'ai une soussade, cambe, da, da, da. La vie des vaches un des. Tout le cas, mais ça plus les contes. Le mer, si des bas, on a la santé. Je monte pas, baby, sinon y aura trop de débat. Allez, trop talon. Depuis le vent de rose, déni a trop talon. Jusqu'à Nema dit, je t'aime, mais c'est trop mal. Bich m'a dit, je t'aime, mais c'est trop mal. Mais c'est trop mal. Yo, jude! Précis comme le samedi à Yakuza. Si tu marches with me, babe, c'est doudre. La carte des blagues disent, alleluia. Da, da, da. Yo, jude! Précis comme le samedi à Yakuza. Si tu marches with me, babe, c'est doudre. La carte des blagues disent, alleluia.
Aïtien!
Da, da, da. I'm a je le t'aime, ni. Da, da, da. Bini, bini, pat me. Da, da, da. Raide en Lamborgine. Da, da, da. J'ai une soussade, cambe, da, da, da. Ramenez la, ramenez. Da, da, da. Full baby, elle, baby. Da, da, da. Ramenez la, ramenez. Da, da, da. J'ai une soussade, cambe, da, da, da. I'm a je le t'aime, ni. Da, da, da. Bini, bini, pat me. Da, da, da. Raide en Lamborgine. Da, da, da. J'ai une soussade, cambe, da, da, da. Ramenez la, ramenez. Da, da, da. Full baby, elle, baby. Da, da, da. Ramenez la, ramenez. Da, da, da. J'ai une soussade, cambe, da, da, da. Oh! C'est qui, c'est qui, c'est qui, c'est qui, c'est qui? Allons, bam, bam, bam! Cap, cap! Well, well. Mais qui, 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 t'as le match? Ah, vas-y, t'as beau faire!
Un jour, j'étais tombé, un jour. Sans pas frapper, moi, de la vie. Et puis là, ça m'a.
Alive!
J'aime moi.
Go back!
Ça met toujours une belle parole. Y a peuple, les.
Alive!
Même sous terre, je rive au bar. C'est où que moi plaît? On pas notre joie, tu me répètes. Ne parle pas des surprises. Y a toujours les bruits, y a mis jouer. Bon, pas on prier ses échos. Est-ce que Dieu qui sait où plaît? Eh, y a même qui ça y a demandé. Moi, c'est ma thème, ma vie, ma, j'aime quitter. C'est où que moi plaît?
Yelle, yelle, yelle.
Ah, ouais, qui j'aime, où me quitte?
Yelle, yelle, yelle.
C'est où que moi plaît?
Yelle, yelle, yelle.
Même si y a moins, pas rien, le.
Yelle, yelle, yelle.
C'est.
Hold on!
Moins qu'à Paris, non. Moins qu'à Auxerre, si je. Car ici, je go. Montrer au sang, bien. Mon moment, ça, c'est beau. Quel sentiment, beau. De deux heures, c'est loin.
What's the mix up?
Up on your knees, I'm singing.
Yo, Sam!
Ay, Virgin blue, hey, demon grease. What? Pussy jump like rabbit, bringin' on it hard. When I be trying, I got it, now she love it dark. Throw a gun near, but I think, but she love it rough. Say she wants me, so I'm so me for dinner. Say she love it, sir, yeah, she love it, stars. Me not believe in a love that go with that.
What?
That go with that. Peel get pop, oh, my sin with ease. Up on your knees and sing with ease. Ay, Virgin blue, hey, demon grease. Do it for the love, she not do it for the cheese. Peel get pop, oh, my sin with ease. Up on your knees and sing with ease. Ay, Virgin blue, hey.
Hello E, who you waiting for? Who you waiting for to sign up for this?
Sintful.
My brother, everything in my life. Yeah. Yo, dropped up.
March 28th!
Need my son.
Like top, my bitch like that. Say she walk on soft night, big doggy. She like guys, I'ma get my drive fast. Yeah, yeah, most I should not like guys. And she's a free fucker, hit like fire. Say she not need love, it bring my guys. So she not shit, my dude, play try cards. I just get my life. Come on, my fucker, dealer. Come on, my fucker, killer. Come on, my papa, pila. I dig a chat, I like a, I posit a parita. Come on, my fucker, dealer. Come on, my fucker, killer.
Just add it to the list! Just add it to the list!
My puff, my way. You know fuck, girl, my puff. So don't fall for me.
March 28th, get your ticket, get your tickets!
Yo, Sam! Tell your friend when you can't see me. My puff, my way. You know fuck, girl, my fuck, police. Tell the alphabet G, no just no B. Girl, you're dying, it's my gonna sleep. Mm, mm. Dogs no weak, why no call me up? So love with me. Pussy coulda tied, don't know where the try coming on to. Whatever was another life. So don't fall for me. And then go cry to your friend when you can't see me. And if you listen to me, son, you know I wicked. But I don't trust nothing when I talk with you. Because silent river run deep. The past damage are incomplete. Love blind, I'ma not search me. If you want some of my money, better start working. Who call me? Now all out, me just a look and fuck. Can't see me tomorrow, do we probably good or no? Bring a friend. And I only them, I'm a thick flyer, round. Stop that, never freak out. Me a good at all, black cat. Yeah, the money bright, he ever see pound, bad cat. Make you drop jazz, you prefer me not, nah. The relationship, me prefer below. So me, I tell you, don't, don't fall for me. And then go cry to your friend when you can't see me. And if you listen to me, son, you know I wicked. But I don't trust nothing when I talk with you. Because silent river run deep. The past damage are incomplete. Love blind, I'ma not search me. You want some of my money, better start working.
Hold up! March 28th!
You must be team, we're defenseless. Run up on me, see if in a headless. All them Papa Malian, get senseless. But they can't feel like bench press. I saw me, saw me want them, I'm a five foot G. When me clip them tall, earthy and stocky. You know I walk up on Martin, I dey kiaki, let them not stop.
Bad bitch, that freak, cannot leave. She drop them, pat me, pan the tangy. He know my style, deep, not pretty. Somebody want a boy, look for my shit. What's in it, bang, gee, no, it's G. Carbon fifteen, ship, things, just ship. Saying you a clown, take me, weed free. Set him up, please, give that man feet. What is a man creep? Yes, cocker shit, man, man, I don't miss me. I'm on this, don't feel like I'm stupid. Criminal, you start to the bond.
March 28th, come on!
Swing in, tell them, me kill a mass. Had all day, I roll in a bun, my shit. Hollywood talk, it, yours, me wanting. Body in a bush, break something out of the dock.
You must be team, we're defenseless. Run up on me, see if in a headless. All them Papa Malian, get senseless. Give it like bench press. I saw me, saw me want them, I'm a five foot G. When me clip them tall, Buddha want stocky. You know I walk up on Martin, I dey kiaki.
What's up with your name?
You're my like, oh, my cocky dog. That tight, tight, pussy, that you gonna lock it up? The foul.
Who else?
In your ass, lock it up. No, nah, look back. Your face don't look like a football. Tear off your jaws, I'ma tear off a gift wrap. Say I want so. Say I'm so. True your body big. Make you a guan so. In a, let me go, me a wicka. You may well, but it in your jica.
General!